The meeting of the downtown councils for July 1, 2014 is now called on. Well, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilor Calhoun.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What? The evenings will be called.
Councilor Calhoun, present. Councilor Stanford. Councilor Boncorrie. Councilor Vroom.
Here.
Councilor Terry.
Here.
Councilor Boyajin.
Here.
Councilor Mayo. Vice President Dovento.
Present.
President Gill.
Present.
Thank you.
Quorum being present, we had July 17, June 17, 2014 minutes circulated.
Motion.
One from Black Councilor. Well, little Terry. Second in abey. Second motion. Any discussion on the motion? Just one typo Denise, under new business. The first motion has an extra zero. It's just a typo.
New business category, second law.
Should say five seven. Okay, so we're good. Okay, the minutes as amended, as circulated and as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Coast unanimous. Thank you. Now I would like to suspend the council meeting to call a joint meeting between the town council and the center planning board.
Motion suspend.
Motion by Councilor Vroom.
Second.
Given by Councilor.
Second.
Leteri. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Coast unanimous. We open the meeting for the joint meeting. Denise, call the roll again please.
Councilor Calhoun, present. Councilor Stanford. Councilor Boncorrie. Councilor Vroom.
Here.
Councilor Terry.
Here.
Councilor Boyajin.
Here.
Councilor Mayo. Vice President Dovento.
Present.
President Gill.
Yes, present. Chairman Roach, would you call your roll please or just stay here? Either one.
I would like to make the thanks to the council for this opportunity of a joint public hearing on the CBD zoning law. I do want to recognize, pardon my moment, the role of the members of the planning board who were in attendance today. Gina Demento. Dave Proctor. He is a Pula. Dave Stazio. And that's right. But I don't care. I'll have to wait. So we are in form for the meeting.
And Peter Roach.
And Peter Roach. Chairman, Peter Roach.
Thank you. Okay, if we could move to a, excuse me, to a public hearing on the Center Business District proposal that Town Planning Board has spent months and months and months on and had some great help and it's a very comprehensive document. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of Center Business District proposal?
I'd like to speak in favor of the changes in the, the proposed changes in the zoning and report received by the council from the planning board. This document has taken a significant step forward in enabling our business districts to really react more adeptly to proposals for commercial establishments to begin opening business in the future. One of the things that, the start statistics that we learned a few weeks ago from our Collins Center colleagues who are analyzing the town's economic base is that this community lost over 1,100 jobs since 1990. That's 41 percent of the total employment base of this town has depleted. It is vitally important that this town regain that footing and moreover, doing so, be a place open for business and be friendly to business and to be supportive to business. Give business every opportunity we can to reclaim that terrain and reestablish Winthrop as a commercial destination and a place where business can thrive. This community's been an outlier, if you will, in the region. Our region has responded quite well over the recent recession and in fact, has grown in its job base by, you know, eight, 10, sometimes 15 percent over the past few years while Winthrop does not. We need to be a player in the region. We need to be a place where businesses is grown, born, and prosperous. And this effort on the planning board part, along with the input of a number of key individuals and stakeholders in the community, is a, is a great step forward in enabling the town to encourage business creation and business success going forward. So I entirely endorse this effort. I want to applaud those who've been involved in it. You know, it's not lost on us, you know, the effort that you're making to take a big step forward and support local business. And, you know, I, I see the opportunity here and the way we exercise responsibly, you know, the, the options that are put forth tonight. We had terrific input from MAPC, the Metro Area Planning Council. Mark Raisinfield is here and he's, and they've been a great ally and technical advisor to the town in, in a multitude of ways, but particularly in guiding us forward and looking at our zoning and encouraging reasonable amendments as put forth tonight that I believe will encourage businesses to once again consider Winthrop a place to do business and to really be more able to create new commercial establishments in town. So I want to thank Mark and his staff at MAPC. Again, I want to thank the planning board and I want to thank all the business leaders in the chamber who've been eager to support this, this effort going forward.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Chairman Roach, did you want to make a?
I just, Tim stole my thunder. I think I want to make sure we did, we don't do express our appreciation of Mark Raisinfield and St. Joe Walsh who really guided us through the process and maybe even more specifically to people like Bob, even Betsy Shane, Paul McGee, who really have been involved in the process for nine months now. They worked hard and diligent, their club role indications, really guided us, gave us the vision and the firing ability to get this thing done as quickly as we have. Believe it or not, writing the new bylaw with a volunteer staff for nine months is reasonably quick. We strongly believe that the, the new bylaw bylaw responds with the town. It's your star and provides sufficient protection to go to the next station, Congress, even on a developed planet. And McKenna has.
Thank you, Chairman Roach. Anyone else that wishes to be here? Mr. Deeb.
Hi, I'm Bob Deeb. I was actually involved.
Precinct two, I'm sorry. Your precinct number is?
Four.
Four. I'm Deeb precinct.
I've been involved with the planning board, not as many meetings as they have, and also participated with the other two boards, Economic Development, and also with the Collins Group who helped in helping the zoning part of it. And coming from my background, if I was being an investor and being a lending institution and also just being a resident, the zoning, if it's not the place, you have no idea what you're doing when you look into buy property. About me as a lender, I could lend on almost no property down there because there's no exactness of what you can do with it, how you can do with it, and it would never generate enough income based on the way the laws are written. Everything takes way too long. It didn't take enough time to take it done. It didn't maximize the use of the property to be able to get the income that you can get down in that area to evaluate. And all committees, when they met, all seemed to be talking about the same thing. And I think the only board did a good job capturing what needs to be done for that business district so people will actually come in and invest, you know, real money into the town knowing that there's an opportunity to make some money now and not be afraid of it. In the past, nobody wanted to do anything. They, they don't take any money and most of the centers sat, sat back here. So, you know, I love what they get for, for what, what's the time they spend.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be here? Yes, Betsy.
I'm Betsy Shane. I'm precinct three, but I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce. Again, I want to thank the planning board for including us and Bob and other business people in talking through what the process was and what was needed. I think for us, what we're excited to finally see is that our businesses that are doing well in the center have the opportunity to expand and thrive without too long of a process and trying to do that and too much of a cost. And in addition, for people like Bob and other spaces that are empty, for now having a better idea about how they can move forward and getting those things built, get the Center Business District thriving more than it is and then that out and back into the rest of the business community for us. So we're very pleased about it and hope that it helps our businesses who are here doing well with expanding the businesses community of the community.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I'd just like to say thank you to the planning board and to all the businesses and all the individuals who participated in this process. It's been our goal over the last couple of years to streamline the process and this certainly, certainly has done it. I know Bob has faced some, Bob Deeb has faced some frustrations and concerns and he put it all very well. Again, Peter and your committee and all of the people that were involved in this process, we appreciate it. Congratulations and it's a big step forward. If there's no further discussion?
Against.
I did.
Unless there's anybody, I didn't say anybody against, but there's anybody, nobody specifically against or nobody else wants to speak? Yes, Rich.
I, I wanted to ask a question, I guess, to Mr. McKenna. What's, with coordination of the different boards that need to approve these different things, is there, how is that going to work? Is it, I think that's, from what I've heard from different people, that's the biggest issue, is getting all of them coordinated so that to fast track this. Is there a specific way to address that?
That's a good segue into what we're doing this summer in collaboration with Alan McGee, our inspectional services commissioner, and my staff. We're actually looking at, and Carla Vitale and the licensing commission, we're looking at ways to simplify and codify a simple process for if you want to open a business in Winthrop, how do you do it? And we've already developed a couple of drafts, looks more like a monopoly board, of simplified, you know, process so that one doesn't get, you know, frustrated as was commented by Mr. Deeb, that you can clearly understand the totality of the task at hand and what, who you need to go to and when and why. And so we're teasing all of that out now. We've set up a little task force in the administration to, you know, synthesize of those steps and hopefully this summer we'll finish that work and be able to publish some documents that will encourage business creation and have it be a simplified process. So stay tuned.
Well, Mr. Boyd, in the most important change in the bylaw, and I think the potential developers advocates respond to this, there's a series of, there's 15 or 20 different uses that are traditional downtown uses like restaurants, ice cream stores, that all require to go through a special permit process. This bylaw eliminates that process. It says these are the kind of users who want downtown, so they're buy right. So that's the most important change we can make is the void is, I think the issue that has been happening with people bounding between the board of field and planning board, different board information, now they, the path is clear. But I think if you adopt this ordinance, then the path, you'll get what they don't get.
Vice President Dovento.
I just want to make a comment and I usually do this, people are seeing the zoning change in front of us. There's been a lot of work to get to this point. There've been a lot of hearings, a lot of things have been vetted, thrown and canned. The rules, the council rules committee had a hearing on it, which has been continued because we need to codify things and put things in prime order for what's to pass. But this puts us into the 21st century doing business in town. It makes, actually everybody's life a lot easier whether you, you forehand or gets it because you know what's, what's going to happen and what can't happen or what, what's there. The steps that have been taken aren't just coming off the cuff, nothing's just being dug out of the hat. There's been a lot of work on this and this is just for the Center Business District. It's just for the area that's, no area is being rezoned or added or deleted from existing Center Business District. So it's just affecting those places that already have some, I'm going to use the word archaic, a turn of the, pre-21st century guidelines, which towns operated back in the 1800 and 1900s on. So this gets us moving forward, it lets people know what's going on. I'm sure, you know, it has, when a change like this occurs, people think it's just being rushed, but it's not. There's been a lot of work behind this and it's not done yet to get it codified, but if anybody has questions, feel free to come in and ask them or try to get, you know, if you have any, any issues and let us know, but it really does, it's a piece of, it's a piece that really brings us into the next, the 21st century final. Only for the Center Business District. Yeah, you know, if it will, we're going to look, maybe look at other districts, maybe look at Crest Ave, not the exact model, but what works in Crest Ave, in the Crest Ave Business District, to help that, Shirley Street area, to help with that. You know, we always hear people say, ah, the, you know, nobody's, the stores are empty, there's nothing going on, there's no growth, no, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? Well, this is doing something. This is taking a very large first step in letting progress happen. And everybody says development, the progress, you know, almost some, some people view them as negative words, well, just think of bringing Winthrop back to the 21st century as opposed to.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Dovento. Councilor Calhoun.
Just to piggyback on Council, Councilor Boyajin, trying to streamline the process where there's so many different boards, is there a possibility, Jim, that there could be such a thing as a group meeting with all the boards so that when someone comes up to present their plans or their ideas or whatever, they don't have to wait for this one to meet, that one to meet or that? Because timing is everything and time is of the essence in a lot of different things that you may want to open up for, say, the summer months or something for, you know, different times of the year.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, that's a pleasure. That's it. You're right on target, Councilor Calhoun. We've actually been talking about holding bi-monthly meetings just to have groups like the Public Safety and the Inspection Services and myself and a few others in the room at one time available for any interested party, frankly, to come in and vet concepts, ideas, preliminary plans, things that we could give, that is some technical guidance, maybe clear up some misconceptions or some frustrations that people have and provide that on a scheduled basis so that, you know, people know, well, you know, it's, it's the second Wednesday of the month, I can go down and meet with everyone and, and, you know, draw, draw on a few concepts and see, see what can be done. And we did that in Gloucester, frankly. We had, we call them technical advisory group meetings and we did that every month. We met, all the department has met. I think in Winthrop, there hasn't been a groundswell to demand that kind of thing, but I think now most folks are talking about the need to have that. So perhaps, you know, what this will do is encourage more ideas to come through the door and necessitate us having to have that kind of, you know, periodic availability so that folks can come in and discuss whatever concepts they have and give them preliminary assistance to do so.
Well, it's nice to have the communication between each board so they all sort of know what's happening at the same time. That's the worst thing when one doesn't know what the other one knows and everybody's trying to backtrack and trying to get the information in after the fact.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilor Mayo.
So I think, unless I'm wrong, this is the 48-foot rule document also. So it would be remiss to walk through the entire evening, plant this out and not say that one of the elements of the, of the revitalization or, or planning is to allow by right 48 feet for mixed use. So in the Center Business District, you could see some redevelopment based on the height that you could go up. If you have one, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot and you can put one floor on it, the marginal cost goes down per square foot as you can develop higher. That does also present issues for the town to start to think about how it wants to plan its development. And if it's successful and people in developers, in my mind, come to find out and bet their vision first as opposed to trying to push it through, I think you have a very good idea of being successful. You certainly can see where in certain areas there would be some pushback. If somebody's going to go up 48 feet in an area which had otherwise been 10 or 12, there's going to be some issues. We've seen that with the hospital. We saw that with the lot on Pleasant Street. But everybody knows something has to happen and if people come, developers come to us, the town makes it accessible, then there's an opportunity to grow. There's one point that everyone in this town questions all the time and that is why with our proximity to Boston, our housing prices and values not doubled. There's, if you draw a radius around and you talk about waterfront property and you talk about a close commute to Boston, South Boston has tremendous development opportunities and growths in pricing. And I think there's an opportunity to bring that here and I think you guys did a good job, but you do have to look at the 48 feet because that's a fundamental difference by right of what we've had in the past.
Thank you, Councilor Mayo. Call it, vice president Dovento.
And one other thing that hopefully it helps everybody, you know, everybody talks developers, development, it also helps the existing property owners who have these properties who are stagnated because of what, where they've been handcuffed. Nobody says that everything's going to go on the market, be bought up and be built. The existing property owners not to take a look at saying, wow, I can do what I always wanted to do and that is put an addition on my, on my space so I can increase my business so I can justify making improvements in the center. So it's not just for developers, it's for the existing property owners too to take advantage of if they so choose.
Any further comment?
I'll just say that this obviously has spurred more thought and more coordination, this particular piece of, particular document, and it's, it's a good move forward.
Vice President, can I just ask on behalf of the people who participate what this timetable would be for adoption or consideration for that?
The rules wanted to just modify it to some, how we do it?
Yeah, I'm going to, the chairman of rules isn't here yet. Rules, we've met on it, we've got to codify, we've got to put numbers in and, you know, 17.37, whatever, all that kind of stuff. So we have another meeting scheduled. We continue our last hearing so that we could work on the exact language of codification so that it can be, so it may be ready for the next meeting. I don't know, the hearings process has been changed more than we have after bringing the Boris advertised and the meeting after that, but I won't put it as a long drawn process, at least by rules.
You let us know when you need the support, participation of the planning board.
What I will do is instead of closing this hearing, I'll just continue the hearing to the next meeting so that we won't have to do this little advertising process again. And hopefully at the next meeting we should be able to vote this, hopefully.
Okay. If there is no further, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Continue.
Oh, sorry, to continue the hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Leteri. Second in abey. Second. Councilor Dovento. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Coast unanimous. Now we need a motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilor Boyajin. Second in abey.
Second.
Councilor Calhoun. And we need to have a voice vote, including the planning board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Coast unanimous. Again, thank you very much for all your efforts and fine job. And procedurally, a motion to return to the regular meeting. Motion.
Take a sip. I'll get right into it now.
Second in abey. Second by Councilor Stanford. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Coast unanimous. Welcome to our recently arrived Florida, Florida birds in this Bermuda, the rest of us, plane was delayed. Glad you made it. Moving on, public comment. Yes, Peter.
I'm Peter Schubert, precinct three. I'm taking side as the public library director. I just wanted to address something that came up in the last meeting, Councilor Leteri was addressing the finance commission and I was very complimentary of the library and the library staff and put out a request that had come through some citizens in town to extend the hours of children's, for the summer, to offer some additional services to the kids this summer. So I got together with town manager and we worked together with Sean Driscoll. I'm coming up with some, some alternatives to just hours in the library and Sean Driscoll and I are going to jointly begin some extra programming focused on reading this summer a couple of times a week, probably something like story time in the park or something of that nature. So I wanted to, I wanted to come back and just report that, that we were going to increase some of these services. And then after further discussion with my own staff, they, my children's staff in particular, Ellen Nicholson and Mary Conley, my longtime children's staff, heard this request and we got together and kind of worked out some logistics and we're going to actually open the library, the children's room earlier, two out of the three, two out of the three days a week that we're open already. So when previously, we didn't open until one o'clock in the afternoon, the children's room on Wednesdays and on Fridays, we're now going to open it when the library opens. So we increased the children's hours by six hours just for the summer. And it's definitely, there was definitely a group effort, but it's particularly Ellen Nicholson, Mary Conley, my children's staff, who are going to be the ones there to serve the kids. So that plus Sean Driscoll and I's efforts to increase programming this summer. I just wanted to come back and say.
Thank you, Peter. And I think this is another great example of a team effort working together with Mr. Leteri making the suggestion and then you guys getting out and this is, this is the kind of thing that we need to continue to do. It hasn't always been here. We saw it with the, with the last presentation. Now we're seeing it with the library and we've seen it with the.
There's a lot of help. It was the very next morning, Jim called me in and said, hey, how can we, how can we work this out? And then, you know, how are you going to get a great Sean Driscoll into the conversation? And then when I went back to report it, a lot of help from my children's staff, so.
Thank you so much for that extra effort.
That's wonderful. Congratulations.
I just want to thank Peter. He's been so energetic since he's been here and he's done a fantastic job and this is, this is the great thing about, you know, a small town, you can make things happen relatively quickly. So I do thank you for that and thank town manager also for making it happen. So it's great news for the kids.
Yes, Mr. McKenna.
Our director was a featured speaker this, two days in Las Vegas.
Oh, wow.
At a national conference of library, library directors and it was well received. So he's getting some national, you know, consideration.
Congratulations. Good job, Peter. Appreciate it. Is there any further public comments? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. For the John Mattego Yano, precinct five, the Yopiea precinct, there's no way to say.
There's three of us.
Anyhow, I'd just like to take a couple of minutes this evening to talk about the situations down at the Atlantis Marina. On behalf of three or four of my friends who are condo owners, not really, cannot be here tonight because of illness and that's kind of a conference. So there are at least two major issues now ongoing with respect to the Atlantis Marina that are of great concern, not only to the condo regent, but to the town as a whole. One is that, it's been on the table for some time now, is the issue of a number of the households who brought up, so-called households, that came to the Atlantis Marina under questionable circumstances last year in that are providing on an ongoing basis essentially a bed and breakfast service, apparently in violation of a number of town orders and so forth. In fact, I just happened to take a number of photographs myself when I was having a cup of coffee over the weekend. You can see, for example, a number of these, you know, households serving, people coming in with suitcases, obviously with the intention of staying at least overnight and with the, at least a couple of these so-called households being served by folks who are taking wandering in and out on a regular basis. So that's ongoing right now. And the other major issue having to do with the Atlantis Marina is the situation with respect to the illegal transfer of the households and the illegal work of expansion of this town last year because of, you know, with respect to the DEP carrying on the chapter management license. Both of those issues are outstanding right now. All the folks, by the way, at the Atlantis Marina fully appreciate the initiatives that town manager, Mr. McKenna, has taken on their behalf by, you know, with the initiative taken to get our town council, you know, who by the way is producing a number of excellent, you know, opinions so far relating to these issues. But the residents of 550, or the, what the Atlantis Marina have right now is, is some, some great concern as to when they might expect some follow-up and real action from these legal opinions that are, that are impossible to be developed right now. So I guess that's my basic question.
Basically, right now, it is in the hands of our attorney, the town attorney, and they are actively pursuing legal options and remedies to, to get this thing done. In fact, I think, Mr. McKenna, you were in touch with them as recently as today on this issue?
Correct.
So it's not dead.
Oh, no, I know that.
It's a complex issue that they are, that they are working on and they haven't forgotten about.
Oh, no, believe me, I understand that, and I've been telling them that too, that this is a very complex issue. We are absolutely supported by, you know, not only Mr. McKenna and the other few, you know, staff, but the town council. And I'm not of the habit of saying good things in low mores, at least in a public setting, but in this case, I would make an exception. They really do excellent work and are totally confident that we won't be able to get, you know, very valid and legal opinions. The only question is like a matter of time, you know, and is there any kind of approximate time left? I just want to make that.
Yes, go ahead.
Councilor President has said that we're looking to take action. To do so requires the proper investigation and that's ongoing. I can't divulge any more than that, other than it's in the right hands and they're pursuing the action they need to take.
We just want to make sure it's done properly, that we.
Oh, no, no, right, after going through all this, but just because the eyes were not done and the teeth were not crossed, that's the last thing that any of us would want. I really appreciate the ability, town manager, to involve.
John, can I just take a look at those pictures? Thank you. Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Mr. President, just for the sake of time, last Wednesday's MWRA meeting was a lengthy discussion on co-digestion. And on your request, we're updating anytime that co-digestion was discussed. They had a sounding done at the town pier which the results came back favorable, that there was no dragging necessary. Waste management is looking into a 10-compartment barge. Each compartment holds approximately 85,000 gallons of slurry. If this was to go forward, that barge would be placed in Charleston over a period of a week. It would be filled initially only two of the 10 compartments and then when it went toward the three-year, the third year of the trial, they would come over here, 50% full and it would be parked in Charleston for a week. It would be emptied there around in four to six hours. Some of the biggest discussion was as moving forward, the Stop &amp; Shop now is in a process of getting permitted to build their own co-digestion and aerobic digesters for their food waste. So currently, right now, it's still in the planning stage. One of the big things was that right now we're calling it food waste. Very shortly it's going to be considered a resource because you're going to have to buy food waste from the vendors that are getting rid of it because the energy that it's going to be produced with technology, there'll be a cost associated with buying this food waste. But again, it is going forward in the barging mindset. And to keep you apprised, there's been no vote by the board whether it's even going to vote for this time. They're still pricing it all up, the pros and cons, because when they go into a full co-digestion, there'll be 10% more solid waste which will have to go down to quinety kilo types. So they're doing both the positives and the negatives, but the calculation right now under a full pilot program would be approximately $5 million a year.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, you said something about Stop &amp; Shop, is that the Stop &amp; Shop franchise corporation that's going to do their own?
Right. They're going to dispose of their own food waste.
They have a co-digestion plan?
They're permitting now to get a co-digestion.
Great, thank you for the update. Appreciate it. If there is no further public comment, we'll move on to correspond.
I have a public comment.
Okay.
Just in time. I just wanted to bring up that both the Supreme Judicial Court last week and the Secretary of State's office last week determined that the repeal to the casino deal and ballot initiative question will move forward and will be on the November ballot. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for Winthrop. I think Winthrop has been treated unfairly in the casino process from the get-go, from not getting a vote in the legislation to start out with and then being treated poorly by the casino developers as the negotiation processes have gone forward. So I think this is a great opportunity for Winthrop. I would urge all Winthrop residents to get involved, pay attention and vote yes to repeal the casino deal.
Thank you. I just was supposed to identify Heather Engmann, precinct.
Pardon me, Heather Engmann, precinct four.
Thank you. Did you get my call earlier today?
I did.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, you can fill us in on the detail. We had a, while I'm in public comment, I'll take the opportunity to say that at the farmer's market the other night, there was a medical emergency and wasn't that the story?
I'm not sure.
All right.
There was a seizure.
Okay, what did, did Mike get involved with something?
No.
Okay, I had it back. Okay.
Yes, he did.
Forget it. All right, moving on. Any further public comment? If not, correspondence, which I have none, committee reports, DPW Councilmen.
So the DPW subcommittee met on Tuesday, June 24th, 2014, at 7:35 in the Harvey Room. President were the DPW committee and Councilman, Paul and I were there, absent was Nick. Also in attendance was Council President Gill, DPW Director Cal and Councilwoman Linda Cal. Following subjects were discussed. Point Shirley flood repair, according to DPW Director, do you want me to go through this entire list?
Just briefly, too.
So we went over the Point Shirley flood repair and due to the fact that it's moving along, FEMA is requiring some additional documentation and because of that, it's likely to be pushed off for a period of time. So we're moving forward, but it is, am I wrong on that?
No.
No?
Okay.
Contract four, which is what we are going to be calling the joint projects of the Water Tower Hill, the Francis and Plummer Street projects, the plenary costs are coming in. The MWRA, as mentioned last time, is going to let us bond. There is going to be some money moved around. There is some money left over from the Walden Street project, about 148,000, and we have some Chapter 90 money coming from next year, which will be used there and there'll be some money left over for a few other ones. The tip project is moving along, but we were told that the state is not accepting any more tip projects for the next four years. So ostensibly, this is somewhat on hold. There, as everybody knows, it was mentioned at the meeting, it was mentioned at the last council meeting, that there is in the environmental bond issue, $3 million for the Lewis Lake project and an additional 625,000 to extend the rip rap along Coughlin Park before it becomes part of the basin. Sidewalk bids were open now, I guess, the other day and we've got 35,000 in. We're going to be doing about 30% more work than, 35% more work than last year, doing it a little bit in a different way. And the bids are in, it's all good, yes?
Yeah, we awarded to La Verrea, building construction company. It's 35% more, but we did add 30,000 of Chapter 90 money to that, so it's a $65,000 contract.
$65,000 contract. And where can I put my hands in the cement first?
It'll be all over town, you can't miss it.
Okay, so that's, I know you guys love to see that happen. Coughlin Park, we're moving along on, the town put in money and by December something before Christmas, the project has to be done. Meter replacements, there's four DPW workers on it. The infrastructure is mostly complete. They have been doing some electronic billing. Commercial meters are actually physically in their spots and reporting electronically. The DPW crew is putting the RF modules outside the house. I'll ask people not to paint those until the DPW director finds out if they can be painted. I know they don't match everybody's home. 900 of those modules are, have been done, so that means there's probably a couple of thousand left.
3,500 or so.
Ah, a few. And 170 homes have actually been fitted out with these little meters and they are getting theirs. The ConCon is just about ready to give the green light. We're waiting to get some okay from the Temple developers to start that project. Pond Street is nearly done. I think the bricks have been ordered. Fisherman's Bend is almost done. If you would like to follow the beach, it's on the website and it comes out in your month, in your weekly meeting, what's going on there. A discussion was held on the subject of senior parking stickers and overnight. A motion was made. A motion is made to increase the general parking sticker to $15 and raise the eligibility for a no-charge sticker to those over the legally recognized retirement age of 67. The motion was passed, but due to the slow work of the DPW chairman, it was not put in this week, so we'll talk about that. There was no motion made on overnight parking. It will remain open for discussion and there was a motion unanimously to end the meeting. And that's my report.
Chairman Moncorris.
Yes.
Other rules and ordinance.
Rules and ordinance, committee met on June 26th of 2014. Meeting was called to order at 7:05. President was myself as chairman, Councilors Veroni and Delvento. Also present was Council President Peter Gill, Donald Kearney who was the chairman of the licensing board, Peter Roach who was chairman of the planning board and Charlie from Viking Taxi, who spoke on the livery ordinance. The first ordinance that was brought up was the 10 a.m. liquor laws. The chairman of the licensing board spoke in favor of it. A motion was made by Councilor Delvento to bring the motion before this council this evening, was seconded by Councilor Veroni and it was passed unanimously. The second issue that we took up was livery limousines. Donald Kearney and Viking Taxi's owner Charlie spoke in favor of it. A motion was made to continue this to our next meeting for development of a draft ordinance to bring before the council in the future. That was, that motion was made by Paul Veroni, seconded by Mr. Delvento and it was passed unanimously. The third issue that we brought up was the planning board's new zoning bylaw for the Senate to this district. The chairman of the planning board spoke in favor of it. The general discussion was in favor of it. A motion was made to continue that issue to our next meeting after we had the public hearing tonight, to take the input of the public hearing tonight. A motion to adjourn was made at 8:10 and I have a motion to come forward under rule business.
Thank you, Chairman Moncorris. If there's no objection, I think we have someone who has come in for public comment and if there's no objection by the council, we'll revert back to public comment, seeing no objection. John, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Actually, I forgot my remarks.
Could you speak up, John? Yeah, a little louder, and with your name and precinct again.
John Rivera, precinct one. This is in response to the response I received from Mr. McKenna, town manager, to several questions I asked regarding the surrounding community agreement with the town and Wigan Sun. Thank you for your detailed responses to the questions I submitted by email on June 18th. I fully appreciate that none of us is asked to be placed in this position to have to negotiate a surrounding community agreement. That being said, it remains our collective responsibility to protect our community for all means available to us. Not only do we have the responsibility to do so, we also have the authority to do so. As we are all painfully aware, for the past few years, a small but vocal group of citizens has repeatedly petitioned the town council to formally oppose the casino proposed for Suffolk Downs. We pursued this course because it is a matter of policy as to whether the town supports or opposes the casino. Policy matters are reserved to the legislature. In this case, the town council is our legislative body. See Article II, legislative branch of the town charter. Further, the town charter precludes the town manager from exercising any legislative or executive function. See Section 1-3, division of powers. I am certain that none of you ever believed or believe now that the town manager may have or may now issue a binding policy statement in support of the casino or in opposition to the casino. In fact, I am certain that none of you would have accepted such a statement from the town manager. You would have been correct to object to and to prevent such a statement from the town manager. Nothing has changed other than the money offered by Wigan Sun Massachusetts, MSM. Under the guise of a surrounding community agreement, MSM has purchased a binding policy statement in support of the casino. This binding policy statement was signed by the town manager without a vote having been taken by the town council. I would like to remind you that the SCA, the surrounding community agreement, has been touted by our state legislative delegation as proof that the town is protected by the casino law. In reality, the opposite is true. The SCA, in this case, actually prevents the town from protecting itself and requires the town to support the casino proposal and now prevents the town from speaking out on behalf of the repeal effort, which will be on the ballot in November. On Tuesday, June 24th, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court issued a ruling that directed the Attorney General to certify and prepare for the Secretary of State a question on whether casino gambling should be legal in Massachusetts. The ruling stated in part that one legislature cannot bind future legislatures. In fact, one legislature cannot even bind itself. The policy or opinion of the town can be decided only by the legislative body, which in our case, again, is the town council. There can be no doubt that just as, just as a vote was required for the town to oppose the casino, a vote is also required to support the casino. The remaining question now is whether the town council could even have entered into a contract dictating the town's current and future policy regarding the casino. The policy in this case, the sentiment of the town regarding the casino, is a matter firmly rooted in the U.S. Constitution. All legislative bodies are enacted and powered by the people they represent. They did not rule over the people, they are ruled by them. As such, no legislature can contract away its, or more appropriately, the people's rights that are guaranteed by the Constitution. I don't have to remind you that 238 years ago this week, our nation's founding document was signed. It, of course, states, "We hold these troops to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness." The rights that are referenced were not codified until 16 years later, when the Constitution and finally the Bill of Rights were ratified by the states. First and presumably most important to a free society is the freedom of speech, which reads, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech," et cetera. To be clear, the Bill of Rights is a list of things that the government cannot do. Our founding fathers understood that the most important freedom that needed to be protected and likely the first one that would be targeted by a malicious government is the freedom of speech. This country was founded on the principle that we all share these rights, which cannot be revoked without due process, nor can Winthrop's town council bargain away these rights. Not only does the town manager not have the authority to enter into a contract which binds the policy of the town, the town council itself cannot enter into such a contract because it too lacks the authority to abridge the freedom of speech of the town. The town retains the same rights on behalf of the people and those rights cannot be contracted or even legislated away, as we learned last week. At the beginning of this meeting, you all stood, placed your right hand on your hearts and declared the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The republic for which that flag stands is nothing but a social contract between us all. The U.S. Constitution is that social contract. It defines the liberty we all enjoy. If we don't uphold it and defend it whenever it is threatened, what will become of the liberties it guarantees? There is still something that you can do. The SCA includes a severability clause, Section 4G. It states, "If any term or provision of this agreement or the application thereof to any person or circumstance shall to any extent be determined to be invalid and unenforceable, the remainder of this agreement or the application of such terms to persons or circumstances other than those to which it is invalid or unenforceable shall not be affected thereby and each term and provision of this agreement shall be valid and shall be enforced to the extent permitted by law." I believe that the SCA cannot require the town to cooperate, and this is in Section 3 of the amendment of the SCA, cooperate with and publicly support the developers' efforts to obtain from the appropriate municipal, state and federal bodies and agencies all such permits, licenses, approvals, as may be necessary to carry out the project, including without limitation the gaming license required under Chapter 23K. I respectfully request that the town immediately seek relief from this and all provisions in the SCA which inappropriately prevent the town from deciding through the legislative process whether to support or oppose the casino proposal. During this week, we celebrate our independence and the freedoms we enjoy. We wrap ourselves in the flag. Just over a month ago, on Memorial Day, we commemorated those who died ensuring our freedoms and promised to honor their sacrifice. I can think of no better way to fulfill that promise than to take this opportunity to correct this injustice. Respectfully submitted, John Rivera.
Thank you, John. Any further public comment? Yes, Lisa.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
At least how many meetings today?
At least how many meetings today? I just wanted to...
Precinct four.
I just wanted to quickly reinforce and reiterate what Mr. Rivera has said. I'd like to obviously congratulate him and thank him for...
A little louder, Lisa.
...the hard work that he's done. Sorry about that. Voice doesn't carry, but congratulate him and thank him for the hard work he's done on behalf of all of us to be able to put this question on the ballot in the fall. I think it will clearly be a challenging campaign for everyone on both sides, but we're very hopeful and encouraged by that. But I would like to reinforce what he said. I think that many of us, I understand the spirit in which the council has proceeded with the surrounding community agreement. I think that many people believe it's unconstitutional to the extent or in the manner in which it does sign off or sign away rights of free speech and rights for the town to state their opinion about the policy, particularly in oppositions. I think that's likely to be probably questioned in court or challenged in court for all of the surrounding community agreements. I think, but for some of them where the some of them may have did cross off that particular language that limited the rights of people to state their opposition. So, I really just wanted to make those few brief comments in support of that. I understand entirely the intent of the work of the council, but I think that that is problematic.
Thank you. Any further public comment? If not, oh, Richard.
No, I mean, I just wanted to reply that, I mean, John, I respect your passion about it, but, I mean, look at our position of what we're supposed to do, what we think is best for the town.
All for one on the council. I don't want to get into a debate here with public comment. Just public comment.
I have a public comment. I just, I was watching that CNN show last week on the 60s, and John Lewis was on, and he's, he was part of the mass of people who went out and started the, the fight to end segregation in the South. And he said, when he was a youngster, his mother would always tell him, "Stay away from the problems." And as an oldster, he came back and said, "Get involved in the problems." So, I'm not going to, right now, support you in public, but I'm going to commend you for not being a part and watching a problem. You saw something that you think needs to be changed, and I respect your drive and desire and ambition to get that through. And I think that when we have people in our town that are willing to stand up for what they think it's right, I think it carries their, their point a lot farther than you would think. So, I congratulate you on that effort for standing up and making sure you saw trouble and walked into it and brought it the way you wanted.
Thank you, council. And, but council, by your own, I should you up maybe prematurely.
Well, yeah, 'cause it was somewhat of a backhanded compliment to John as well, is that, that exactly...
Take anything I can get.
Yeah, no, I know. But, no, I think that, you know, put in our position, what we're trying to do is what's we think is best for the town, and sometimes it is hedging our bet. But, as you know, there, I mean, I agree with exactly what Craig had said, that you're not shying away from it. And the whole, there's a large group of people, including many people on the council, that have a concern about things, and, you know, I think that you've overcome a huge hurdle with the SJC and everything else, and to get this on the ballot, to let people have their voice. And I think that's where things need to be heard, and whether it's focusing, I don't think that the town's restricted only in the quotation mark town. Individual town councils, individuals still have the freedom to speak their mind, and I think you'll see that coming.
Thank you, council. If there's no further comment, we will move back to the regular order of business to Mr. McKenna's report.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm sorry. Finance committee report. Oh. Sorry. The finance committee met this afternoon, this evening, at 6:30. Present were myself and Councilor Terry, also present were Jim McKenna, Council President Gill, and the following. The two items on the agenda were a Miller Field transfer presented by Paul Don for $9,177.50 to deep-tie in year rate, and receipt of football field, and a Trump talk dress with 35 tons of sand. Questions raised as to why not using school funds, and the answers were, schools would have to move money around from the presented budget. Councilor Terry presented a motion to move forward towards, to the full council recommending $4,580 transfer contingent that the schools paid the balance, and that was a unanimous vote. Town manager McKenna presented year transfers of $3,657.03 from workers' comp to the town attorney account of $3,600, $33. I guess, we'll clean the language up, I have a typo here. And $49.70 for the appeal board, motion by Councilor Terry to recommend a transfer to full council for action. The unanimous vote, meeting adjourned at 6:50.
Thank you. Any further committee report? Sorry about that.
What were the, what were the numbers there in the beginning on the Miller Field thing there? Is that, that's not, I didn't see that.
The original number was $49.9177. Go ahead. $9,177.50, and the amount recommended for transfer is $4,580, which is half.
So, you're splitting it, weren't you?
Yes. That's, that's going to be coming as a mandate on the motions before tonight.
They would have to accept that more for us to...
Yes, they would. I'm sorry.
Mr. McKenna.
Yes. Good evening, Glenn. I, I'm requesting that the council take a pause from its rules tonight and act on a project funding agreement, the final agreement of the MSBA project. Many of you know that this has been a process developing over some time since we inked the first phase of this agreement back in October of last year. And here we are at the changing fiscal year and a project that's well underway, and the MSBA has promulgated its final project funding agreement for the town to execute. And I would ask the council to authorize the council president to execute on behalf of the town. The Massachusetts School Building Final Project Agreement was sent, I believe electronically to everyone today. It's, it is under emergency order simply because of the end of, close of fiscal year and the beginning of the new fiscal year. I wish we had this in a more timely fashion. There was some considerable debate between the town and MSBA about some final terms, and those haven't worked out. So, I'd ask the council to take a roll call vote and endorse the council president's signature on this thing. You've seen the numbers here. Nothing has changed since you originally reviewed this back in the fall. It's just a question of, you know, the lawyers doing their job and getting this thing finally to us these many months later. So, under new business, I'd ask for consideration of that. I met with Dr. Bradley Scott, the general manager of the MBTA, yesterday. I was glad to have Chief Flanagan with me and that he changed the chamber, and it was a great meeting. We're looking for partnership with the MBTA on a number of fronts, at least of which is our ferry service getting, we know that ferry service is more supported and survives with the MBTA involved, and as the Hingham example tells us. And so, she was very enthrall with the community, frankly. She had a nice tour around the entire town, saw what a gem we really are, and see what a no-brainer is, as she calls it, you know, looking to enhance the opportunities in Winton with transportation. She appreciates the fact that we need to perhaps augment some service between Orient Heights and the ferry landing, the town landing, that there may be, I need to introduce the hubway system there or some other, you know, ideas of transportation. If they're willing to explore those ideas with us, they're willing to look at their marketing capacity and to see how they may be able to help the town, market the town to points west of here and within their system. She's interested in looking at the ferry service and frankly, seeing how we can make that a sustainable proposition for the town. She's in support of water transportation, and she wants to see this succeed. So, we gave her the short version of what we're doing, you know, to try to encourage service to the town this year. She's exploring some ideas to see if there are any vessels available or whatever reach they have within their organization to look out on our behalf and advocate for something in the short run. And then, she also is encouraged about the long-term prospects of us acquiring the vessel and then helping us to sustain it going forward. So, all in all, it was a very, very nice meeting of two entities looking for partnerships. Do you have anything to share, Rev? Paul?
No, I had the pleasure of bringing her around town. It was a pleasure. I showed her all the railroad beds and told her we had no luck with turns either. But when she went over to our marge and saw the bridges that the DCR had done, she pushed a lot of it, and we're trying to build tourism, you know. She says the business from her other assignments throughout the country, bringing people to ecosystems and to build out, she just felt that was a huge draw, even for the students of Boston, and, you know, they, it was like they had a day in the country. They had a great day.
Thank you.
I'd like to, since the chief has already begun his discussion, let's talk about the plans for the Fourth of July and the pending storm for a minute, if you can give us a quick update.
Well, we all met this afternoon, and we were talking about the fireworks. Everybody's on the road, Vetsy, Shane here is part of the Boston crew. But tonight, watching the news, we are cautiously optimistic that Friday is looking better. Some of the weather forecasters haven't switched because they still don't have a path that the hurricane's going to take. They feel that it will be a category one hurricane off the Carolinas Thursday afternoon. But we've all heard about this front that's going to stall. They now think the front's going to move along and bump this thing out off the Carolinas, which by noon time, things should start to clear up. They said they are still cautiously optimistic, so we are going to make a decision on our fireworks sometime tomorrow morning. Problem that we have is once the fireworks show up and they're due to be on Kaufman Park at 6:00 a.m. Friday morning prior to the kickoff of the Horrible Parade, once they get down there, and we own them to which time we can shoot them off, which is, there's a penalty that's assessed by the fireworks company for no fault of ours. There's fire watches due to the state regulations pertaining to explosives. So, our goal is if we bring them in on Friday, we want to shoot them on Friday. So, if we do call them up due to a suspect, and it's not that little window of 40 minutes to shoot them off, it's the time that it takes to wire up. There's no more throw them in the tube and hit them with a flare. They all have to be wired. So, as long as the fireworks company feels they have adequate time based on the forecast, we're going to go on Friday night. But we will have it on the town website, WCAT Electronic Science, and if the manager's permission will maybe go the cobra path if we do postpone.
Is there any possibility that people could still give donations? You wouldn't reject donations from this point?
No, no.
It's okay if somebody wants to get in touch with you?
It was going to be a 30-minute show until I got Councilor Von Corre's donation, and we made it 40. 40. Maybe a few more will make it 60. You can count on a 10-minute tradition. I promise you that. Councilor Von Corre, right?
Chief, is there, if it doesn't go off on Friday, is there a backup date?
On the contract with Atlas Pyro, Saturday night is the optional night.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, continuing on. I'd like to, you know, it is the summertime, and we're trying to maintain cleanliness throughout the community. And it's, some days it seems, I know for Steve and his crew, you know, a very endless battle to keep the town clean. One of the things that we're trying to encourage is to carry-in, carry-out proposition. Many communities with beaches, for example, use carry-in, carry-out and advertise it. And really encourage consciousness among those who use our facilities that if they bring trash to the beach of any kind, they must take it with them when they leave. You know, we are cleaning these beaches every day, and yet we still find too much refuse left behind. We scratch around underneath and find, you know, bottles and whatnot hidden in the sand. It really is incumbent upon us to get the word out that people need to take ownership of their trash and take it out. If you bring it in, you take it out. We posted some signs at our beaches informing folks. I think we need to even go further and start talking about this among our friends and family. And, you know, one of the things we did in Gloucester when we introduced carry-in, carry-out was we put a notice in the flag, you know, in the backpacks, and they educated kids, and they became great zealots about the importance of taking care of the trash at beaches and other facilities. We want to start that, that conversation now so that we can stay ahead of the problem. Steve, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, you touched on it. We are out there, and we're finding more and more people thinking that they can dispose of their trash by digging a hole in the sand and burying it. It's not the right way to do it. We certainly hope that people will pay more attention to the beaches instead of playgrounds as well and clean up that for themselves.
Thank you. Yes, council.
Is there any benefit in putting some recycle bins along the beach so that people that do have bottles and plastic, you know, containers and things like that, that, you know, would be a benefit to the town to put it there?
There's really only two spots that I can put it, one being the Yellow Beach Bay entrance and one over at the dead end of Bayview Ave., which is kind of a residential area. And then we kind of go in against what we're trying to promote, is people take ownership of their trash. But we can certainly look at...
I think that's something we're seeing on the Harbor Islands, is that whole philosophy of carry-on, carry-off.
Yeah, no, I assume that, I assume it. And I know I have gotten some complaints too, and I did notify your department about barrels on Shore Drive from, that would be the DCR, you know, responsibility. Do you know, anyone?
They were on that. We've got the question to look at. You know, the irony is, is the more barrels you put out, and we're trying to get, they noticed in McCabe and on Cranes Beach and elsewhere, once they took the barrels out, the beaches were cleaner. Because they enforce carry-in, carry-out. Who would figure? But that's what happened. So, it's sort of a double-edged sword.
Councilor Biaj.
How did they, how did they enforce it in other towns? Is there an enforcement mechanism?
There's, there are people that go around and keep an eye on it, obviously, and, you know, there are warnings and serious fines.
Do they issue tickets?
And they do. They issue tickets, so, you know, hopefully, you know, you don't have to do that, but, you know, we need to think in those terms, certainly if we find violations.
Councilman.
You know, the same thing happened down the landing. I was down there over the weekend, and the guy is down there, but because there's a trash barrel, it draws trash. And instead of people taking it, it's packed. And, and the seagulls have, they got, they got a handle on that trash receptacle, and somebody came, picked it up, put it into the thing, the seagull came in, went into the trash, took it out, ripped it up all over. And I, you know, you hate to say it, but maybe that less barrels is better on, in some of those areas, you know?
Thank you. Any further comment on that issue? Mr. Manager.
I'd like to add that we have issued a temporary license to allow a vendor at the landing to provide sandwiches and whatnot for the Fourth during that period, and are encouraging a permanent vendor for the season at the landing as well. So, we'll see how that goes. Last year, we had a vendor at the Fourth at the landing, it went very well. We're looking to continue that and make, you know, that concession available for the public.
Thank you.
Yes, on the follow-up, which is how we deal with the lifeguard situation?
We have two chairs out there, and I understand several lifeguards have been appointed, so that program's underway.
It working now as a guide?
The lifeguards are scheduled to start on Thursday. We acquired two chairs from DCR today, and we'll go out back to get them on the beach tomorrow. Of course, I can't bring a machine out there without a spotter, so we're going to have to try to bug these chairs out on the beach. to try to bug these chairs out on the beach. They're the best.
Any further comment? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and I did not attend, but I understand it was a very successful French Square Market this past weekend, and this goes to show you how, you know, the town is really coming around to this idea of, you know, celebrating itself at these times. And, you know, we're looking for a very vibrant summer season for that event. And I'd just like to say that, you know, the staff has closed the year very strong. Our finances look good. You know, hopefully, we'll have a very favorable report to give at the close of the summer. And, you know, only two small deficits of very minor consequence from a budget of $49 million is really hitting a hole's eye. So, my thanks to my staff and my department heads for managing their budgets.
Well done. Thank you. I'll say. Old Business. The first item under Old Business is the national grid to install a pole at Shirley Street on Veterans Road. My understanding, Steve, that you haven't had any communication back from them?
This is Shirley Street, that'd be there, Steve.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. No, well, I did. I got a call, but the call was just that they were looking to see now, you know, if it was feasible, our request was feasible. I hadn't heard back since.
My suggestion at this point is that we table this, instead of voting no, so that if we vote no, we have to come back with it. So, if I could have a motion to table it? Motion by Council Santa. Table seconded by Council Boyajah. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Council Mail, on the senior work program, you, that also hasn't been addressed at this point. Would you like to make a motion to table that?
You can.
Have me?
I'm happy to make a motion to table.
Motion by Council Mail to table the senior work program. Motion. Is there a discussion? And seconded by Council Latiri. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. You did have a motion, Council Mail, to request the town manager to develop a nighttime parking sticker to allow people to town parking lots?
We took that up at the DPW meeting and have just continued to take it up.
Okay, we're going to put that as, if I would accept a motion to table that instead of voting it down? So moves. Motion by?
It's not going away.
No, I'm not table.
It's coming back.
Motion by Council Marone, seconded by. I didn't say it was coming back. I just want to get it off the agenda until you bring it back. Seconded by Council Latiri. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Senior citizens' parking stickers. We have a motion for discussion to allow senior citizens, recipients, the ability to pay the current fee. I guess probably what we need to do with that one is table it, and you can bring back the other one, or you can bring up the other motion now and see if the council wants to waive the rule. But could I have a motion to table or withdraw? You want to withdraw that motion the way it was written, Council, and then start again?
No.
Or do you want to table it?
No, because if the motion that we have doesn't pass, it would certainly still be there.
All right. Could I have a motion to table?
Motion.
Motion by Council Boyajah to table.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President DeBento. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Council Boncorrie. Boncorrie. The limousine and livery.
Yeah, I make a motion to table both. The limousine and livery license issue and zoning change in the business district issue.
I'm sorry. Can we do them individually? Table a livery license?
Motion.
Motion to table.
You want to table it or postpone it?
Table it.
Okay, motion by Council Boncorrie to table the License Commission request about livery licenses. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President DeBento.
Question.
Discussion, Council?
You're not marking these together.
No. Do them individually. Council Mail?
Why are we tabling this? Is there no?
Until we meet again and we come back with the track.
We had a lot of questions at our last meeting.
I didn't know if you were taking it off the agenda or if you were leaving it on your agenda.
We're leaving it on our agenda in the committee. Till our next meeting, we'll come back with a draft sometime in August.
Okay, we talked at the meeting that we would hopefully do something in the second meeting in July, but, so, but you still want to table it or postpone it?
No difference.
When you table it, you have to take it back off the table to vote it. If you postpone it, it's still active. If it's tabled, I take it off the agenda. Let's vote.
Now, make a motion to postpone if that's.
Motion by Council Boncorrie to postpone, seconded by Council Boyajah. Postpone to the next meeting, and then if we have to postpone again, we vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
The zoning change center business district, I will make another motion to postpone.
Okay, motion on the center business district. Okay.
Can we fill him in a little bit because he wasn't here when we had?
Yeah, you want to go ahead and fill him in, Council?
The whole discussion, I mean, the whole purpose of this is.
Yeah, I talked to the people in the planning board outside. On the way in, I talked to them. So, I know what the discussion is.
And I'll second and just state that the, I'm assuming Council Boncorrie's motion is to postpone with the hope that at the next meeting, we'll be able to vote on it. Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President DeBento. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. The License Commission, do we vote your motion?
Yes. I have a motion on behalf of the Rules and Ordinances Committee, and the motion is to amend the Winthrop Town Bylaws, Section 5-04-130, titled Hours of Sale, subsection B, by deleting the words "12 noon" and replacing, in place thereof, the words "10 a.m."
Coming out of committee, there's no need for a second? Are you through with the motion, sir?
There was a second section that I think you do separately.
Okay, so is there a second for the second? I'm sorry, coming out of committee, we don't need a second. No second needed coming out of committee? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I'm sorry, Council Latiri says no.
All right. I have another motion to change Section 5.04.130, Hours of Sale, subsection C, by deleting the word "11" in that chapter and replacing it with the word "10."
Coming out of committee, there's no need for a second. Any discussion?
Question? The first one was for restaurants, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And what is this one?
This, the sections, okay. The first section, I'll, either way, it meets the whole. Those, this is the one we have already voted on. It said, "No sale shall be made between the hours of 1 a.m. and 10 a.m. on Sundays or on Christmas Day or the day following when Christmas occurs on Sunday, and the last Monday in May between the hours of 2 a.m. and 12 noon," it used to say. Now, it's going to say in both those places, "10 a.m." Okay? The one we're changing now, subsection C, says, "No sales shall be made between the hours of 2 a.m. and 11 a.m. on New Year's Day and the Fourth of July, whenever such days do not occur on a Sunday." We're changing that word "11" to "10 a.m."
Okay.
Does everybody follow that?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Council Latiri opposed. Okay, Council Boncorrie, then, we need to do a motion to accept and activate MGLs.
Oh, we did that already. We did that at the last meeting.
We did, okay.
Did that.
Okay. And at that point, we just refer to rules for the line.
Yeah, we just refer to actual rules.
Okay, good, thank you. Any further, Old Business? If not, Council.
Coming out of the Finance Committee this afternoon, is a motion to transfer, to approve the year-end transfers for fiscal '14 in the accord with Mass General Law's Chapter 44 S. 33B Paragraph A. Fiscal '24, fiscal 2014 year-end transfer from workers' compensation number, it was Two, town attorney, contract services, 0115152544350, $3,607.33. And appeals board personnel, 01242515111, $49.70.
Coming out of committee, there's no need for a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Motion by Council President Gil, I move that the town council review the town codes and ordinances regarding solid waste section, solid waste collection, Section 1312-070 and 1312-080. Do I have a second?
You're going to pass it again?
I'm sorry. I'll read it again. I make a motion that the town council review the town code and ordinances of solid waste collection, Section 1312-070 and 1312-080. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Council Santa. And I would like to make, before we vote, I would like to make an amendment to that that we also include 12-090, 12-100. So, it's, can I have a motion on the amendment? I mean. He's going to the Vice President. I need a second on the amendment. Question?
Yeah.
What were the other two sections? 12, did you say, what do they pertain to?
Point 0, I think, the next two sections in a row.
Right.
090 and.
It's 70, 80, 90, and 100. Okay, because you said 12. I thought.
Well, it's 13, 12.
Okay.
13.12.80, 13.
Fair enough.
12.90, 13.
Thank you. Solid waste. I'm going to turn a motion. Is there a second to the amendment?
I have a minute.
I'll second up the discussion. Report some discussion.
I just want to know what we're reviewing for. Is there an issue? Is there a problem with it? And hopefully, as they make a motion and explain it, because we did an ordinance review a couple of years ago, and they went through every motion, and they reviewed them, and they changed them, and then we came back to the council and actively changed them and brought them up to date supposedly, so I don't know what we're looking at.
What do we change?
The motion, the motion is to review, so it's going to get referred to a committee. But first, we need the amendment to extend.
It's coming to my committee.
Yeah, I'm on the committee too. So, first, we need the amendment to extend it to 1312.100. We have that amendment on the floor. Do you want to take any action on that?
Can I ask you a question? What does this amendment relate to?
Yeah, no, I know. The amendment adds more, all the sections weren't included for solid trash, includes all, it includes the bottom two sections, which would be, when I was typing, it ended in .80. There's also a .90 and .10, which is complaints and disputes, is .90. And .10100 is violations of penalties, etc., so they were also included in the review.
Would you, could you read them? Do you want to read them?
But why are we? I'll go over them when the amendment's passed. I'll explain what I'm trying to do.
Well, I think you need to know what would pass before we pass anything, right?
We're not passing it.
The motion is to, the town council review the town code and ordinances of solid waste collection, Sections 13.12.070 and Sections 13.12.080. I'll take any other action. It's a motion to review them. The items of discussion are commercial establishments, responsibility of owner, limitation of amount of trash, it's basically, it's our trash collection, it's our trash pickup code. But the amendment, that was just for the code itself. The amendment is to include the provisions that the town has for complaints and disputes, which currently, the Board of Health shall take such action as is necessary to provide proper collection of trash and recyclables. I'll keep reading if you want to.
Should we refer to rules and ordinances?
First, we have to see if there's an amendment to include the whole thing. And the other section to add in the amendment is 13.12.100, violation slash penalty, which states any person who shall violate any provision of this chapter shall be fined not less than $10 or more than $500 unless otherwise provided by law. The crux of the motion is to review the code in general. The second part is the, which is under discussion right now, is the amendment to add in the review complaints and disputes and the penalties. So, the motion is, if we move, if we move the question forward of the review, do we add in complaints and disputes and violations? So, that's the amendment.
Council President, has there been some concern, is some?
Yeah.
And maybe you can elaborate a little bit, just, I think a lot of us aren't clear.
I appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted, because it was a motion to amend that hadn't been addressed yet, but I'll go ahead and address the whole thing. We had, a couple of years back, we had reviewed that, and then we had some issues when we sent out a reminder to the citizens as to what the rules were. And since then, I've observed and I've heard from constituents that the regulations aren't being followed. So, I think we have an obligation either to follow them or to change them. One of the reasons that we passed, or that the previous council passed these rules and regulations, was an issue of rodent control. Revere has put into place a very strong rodent control program. We have a rodent control program on Winthrop Beach. If the rodents aren't being fed where they have been fed, they're going to seek more funding, more feeding. If the trash is put out improperly in violation of the code, then it attracts rodents. The code specifically speaks, oh, and then there's also an aesthetics issue. The code currently says that the trash will be put out on the day of collection. What's happening is, and it's spreading, trash is being put out the day before, now it's being put out two days before, not at every house. But my personal observation was that it started off as a little problem, a house here, a house there, and it's expanding. If you drive down the street on a Tuesday, you see, Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday morning, you see Thursday's trash out in some places. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, do we enforce, change, or ignore the rule? And that's all I, that's my intention. I think another piece of my intention is that I've asked the town manager if it would be feasible in the next water bill to send out a summary of the ordinance. And at some point, if we're going to change it, we have to have a court hearing. But I think we need to remind the public that there is an ordinance. We need to request the public to conform to the ordinance. We need to have trash in sealed containers like it says, not in plastic bags. We need to determine, are we going to keep the limit of three bags, or are we going to have people put out six bags and no barrels? I just think it's an issue, and it's an issue that's growing, and it's the broken window issue. If it happens here today, it extends and it is expanding. So, that's my reasoning for putting it out there. I'm going to go back to the amendment, the, the main motion is to review. There's no specifics yet to, on the review. The amendment is to include complaints and disputes, which is currently under the Board of Health, and violations, which is the fines are from $10 to $500. The amendment is to add those two sections in the review. If we're to do, if, then what we want to do?
Shake the line with the Board of Health or put the line to someplace else?
If we need to change any language to make things. If we need to change any language to make things work. So, no?
It seems like there's, there's definitely a need for this, to, to take a look at it. But I think I'm going to enact my council right, just to postpone it, because it seems like there's some confusion out here. And I would just like to take a meeting, just think about it a little bit more, and to see all the repercussions of what we're doing. I'm assuming we're just going to end up passing it to a committee anyway, but I would like to invoke my council right, just to postpone it.
I would go take that action, and I think we'll end it here and postpone it until the next meeting.
Can I just ask a question?
Not on that topic. It's postponed, it's postponed to the next meeting.
I made a question, a statement.
Point of privilege, point of privilege you can make.
Since, sooner or later, this is coming to my committee, I would tell everybody to take a look at it, because I think it's pretty clear. I think the problem we have is getting, and the postponers, to, you know, what the bylaw says that needs to be changed, I think the bylaw is clear as a bell.
What is clear as a bell?
There's no bags, there's.
No, I agree, it's clear as a bell.
Are there people complaining about it?
So now you go back to what I wanted to bring up before, I couldn't bring it up, because it couldn't be brought up anymore.
And make a motion that you can bring it up.
Well, thank you. But the simple, thank you, I appreciate that. Can, can we enforce that? Is there, is there space in the, in the crowd to get that done?
I'm just, we've been working on so much with Al, the fire and police chief perspective, we've, we've stretched this department pretty good in its current format, including with Mark helping out for manual patrol half the time, and with Al on some of these housing inspections, receiverships, and foreclosures now that we're working on, enforcing the foreclosure ordinance that was passed, and bringing that up to date. This department is stretched. I, you know, I would recommend to the town manager that we look at the records being brought in, that we, if this is a priority of the council and the town manager's office, we look at the records that are coming in, and dedicate a certain revolving account or whatever, enterprise account, whatever account that they see fit, to fund the sensational activities, because you need someone every night, every night, and their offices usually will be during the day, they respond out at night, Mark's been out at three, four in the morning when we call him out for animal issues, but I think it's unfair to Mark to be switching his shift and bringing him back out. We don't, he's very good with us, we work out the extra, the extra time, in a untraditional way, so, but I'll get into the details of that.
So my, my question, I'm sorry, Councilman Mill.
No, I'll, I'll, since that's been postponed, you can.
Have a gavel back.
It's been postponed, but I would like just to get some clarification as, as to the wish of the council, the town manager, and the enforcement offices. Is it, is it your wish, council, that we just take this and ignore it? And say, we're not going to enforce anything? And, and, let me finish. I would like to have the wish of the council to, to have the town manager include a letter in the next water bill, reminding people of the ordinance. Now, if you want to add to that, this is the ordinance, but we're not going to enforce it. I think the town people need to have a review of what they're supposed to do, that they're not doing. I feel very strongly about that. If you're not ready to enforce it, and you're not ready to review it, that's up to the council. But I think, I think we have an opportunity to inform the citizens what they're supposed to do, and we can do it for no cost, by sending it out in the water bill. Counsel, what do you have?
Mr. President, I mean, it's, I think it's similar to when you're talking about the beach and carry on, carry off, it's how much do we want to enforce for, and I think maybe we should do some data collection about, is it actually upsetting townspeople, our people, are there a lot of complaints? I'd like to know the volume of complaints about that particular issue before, as, you know, the chief said, that we're stretched pretty thin when it comes to the inspection services as it is. Maybe we need to figure out a way to prioritize our efforts.
Counsel, what?
Have we hired the other part of the inspection service department to be hired?
No.
We need the board of health person, this still needs to be hired. Wouldn't that cover into his review, since under section nine, we give it to the board of health as far as complaints? So, I mean, that, that person should be the one enforcing it. So let's get him hired, and it'll be enforced.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we are in the process of hiring, the job is posted, we're getting resumes, it's, it's an activity that's on the agenda of the commissioner to go through that and recommend to me a person to fill that slot. It is under the sanitation code, you're correct, councilor. And that is a very important piece of the enforcement here. You know, it's important for us to recognize that if you, as a council, believe that there's not enough enforcement going on, and if that's the message that's being sent, then we need to consider that, and to deploy our resources accordingly, and give more focus to trash as a matter of concern of this community. And if that's a directive of the council, then I certainly will leave in that direction. But, you know, it, everything comes at a, at, you know, as thin as we are, as, as an exchange of value here. And so, you know, it's not lost on me, the concern of the police chief, of, you know, the one person that we have out there who's, who's doing a multiple hat job, that it's a challenge, it continues to be one. We may have to dedicate some additional resources to this effort. If we're looking to have a renewed campaign that enforces the existing bylaw, then let's do it, and let's do it right.
Counsel, Mill?
Yeah, I, you know, I wanted to have a scorched earth philosophy on parking when they, on trash day, when they sweep the streets. So, and I, and I didn't sense that there was a lot of feel for that, but I'm just wondering, you know, as you may, Mr. President, what do people think about this? Do we want to have, I mean, I hear a lot from people that we don't enforce this, we don't enforce that, we don't enforce this. Now, I don't know if everybody's going to be thrilled when the enforcement comes down, because there are a lot of rules and regulations that, that some of us that are doing that you wouldn't notice it, and you're going to get, you know, tagged for it. But what do other people think? An open question, what do people think? Should we be, you know, my guess is there's enough things you could tag, you break even on the deal, if you, you know, brought someone in. And my guess is also, if you tag me once for parking the wrong way, I may do it again, but not if you do it twice. So you would think if you, you know, three weeks of trash, and three weeks of parking the wrong way, and three weeks of, you know, stuff, boy, in a year, you, you straighten everybody out pretty quick. People, people react quickly to fifty dollar tickets.
I think enforcement reads compliance, and that's what I mean, it worries compliance, not the money. Counsel, say.
I, I, I think education is important, as Counsel Brian said, I think that's first and foremost. I know we're stretching Fourth of July, it's summertime, we're going in a lot of different directions. I think education, if we can do it with a simple statement, at least to begin with, and then enforcement as we go forward, because I know we are stretched right now. And, and we, you know, you have to take into consideration, where I live now, I don't have elderly people, but I'll give you an example, Joe Harvey, at, you know, six o'clock in the morning, when he lived across the street, and he used to, you know, drag his barrels out and have to get up early. So sometimes you got senior people, sometimes you got sickly people, so it's not all, all that cut dry. And I agree, there are people who are, you know, abusing it. However, I think, I think we have to be somewhat sympathetic to certain situations. But if you have a neighbor who's elderly or sickly, you might want to help them out in the morning. But there's all kinds of things that go along with this. But I think education is important, I think as we go forward, putting some kind of an enforcement program will help, but I, I think, again, we are pretty stretched right now. But we've got a lot of things accomplished, on the other hand.
You know, as we drive around town, we see a town that's cleaner than it's been for many, many years, and it really bothers me, maybe it's a fetish, but it bothers me to see the trash out.
Let's call it a pet, gee.
Days before.
Is that on the record?
That's not one. Sorry about that. Can you wind that back? But would the council be opposed to having the town manager put a reminder in the water bill?
Absolutely not. It's an easy thing. Let's do that. I didn't expect this to pass tonight, I didn't expect it to be enforced before the fall, because we are busy. But I wanted to get it on the table. I think it's an important issue, and if there's no objection from the council, I'd ask the town manager. And then we'll work on the enforcement issue later.
Bring seven, seventy and eighty and put it right in the bill. Bring the whole bylaw, put it in the bill.
And by the way, they, the reason I put ninety in there was because I wanted to identify.
Raise it, go.
No, no, I wanted to raise, I wanted to, I wanted to identify who was responsible, and then ten to say what they.
Well, I know right now, the ordinance says that they can't put their trash out before in the morning on pickup.
Which is twelve oh one AM, right?
Well, here's my thing, you know, it seems like the problem is that there are people that have difficulty in the morning. Now, is there a way to compromise that, that people can put their trash out the night before, but after, say, nine o'clock?
Well, that's what I wanted to.
So that, not during the day, you're not going to see it anywhere, and it would make it very easy for our offices. If they see something out before nine o'clock, then there's a ticket right there. From nine o'clock on, and they pick up the next morning.
I think we want back onto the sky. Excuse me, can I, point of privilege, I did make a motion to use my privilege fifteen minutes ago.
Yeah, we're not voting, we're just discussing.
Yeah, all right. With all due respect, the motion.
Miller Field. Postpone. Postpone. Actually, gavel back?
Yes, you do.
Miller Field repairs.
Okay, motion out of the finance commission, committee, excuse me, that the town council transfer, and this is an amended, amended motion from the one that's in our package. The mo, the town council transfer from town council reserve account, zero one 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 zero five two five seven six one zero zero, the amount of four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars towards the repairs of North Field contingent upon the balancing paid by the school department, as a special attic on the general front.
Proceedually, can we make that instead of a different motion, an amendment to the motion? How do you want me to withdraw the original motion?
I think the finance committee can make the amended, amended motion.
All right. So the, the motion coming from finance committee is, the town will transfer forty-five hundred dollars.
Forty-five eighty.
Forty-five eighty, if the school committee will pay the balance. Is that correct? Is that a basic sum?
That, that's a basic sum.
Any, any second? We don't need a second, coming out of committee. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
What are we getting for that money? I mean, I see we're getting ten acres, forty-four bags of something, which I don't know what it is. What are they doing? I mean, we need to restore all of the field, like, we were trying to get grants for fifty thousand, three hundred thousand.
This is for the plank surface, for the grass surface, this is a deep tine iteration, which is an eight to ten inch iteration of the field, of the soil that's there, to loosen it up, seeding it, and we seed in a couple of directions, so it's cross seeded, and then topping it with thirty-five tons of sand, top dressing it, so that, to, in the aerated areas, you know, to get some drainage. So it kind of, because that field has been so compact, it needs to be kind of flopped up. This'll do, it's just the plank, you know, plank surface, the grass surface.
But aren't we working to, like, take out that whole field and put it in a turf field? I mean, how to put a turf field?
The situation comes down to that, this is not, not a long term, this is something that should have been done every five, ten years, you should be doing this type of program which has never been done. So until that should occur, right now the field is almost like concrete, and this will get it into, into a much better state for under ten thousand dollars for the next few years, so that it can be actually playable and maintainable, and not have the divots in it, not have all the, the lumps and bumps.
Hold us over.
Counsel, let you.
Just to speak to Mr. Moncuris, this, David, it was said, I believe, that this is something that's going to be need, probably, going to have to be done probably two or three times over the next two to three years, before any kind of new field would be in. And also, the other concern that was brought up was that it's very difficult to grow grass in the summer. You know, it should have been done in the spring, but it's, the field has been used so many, so often between soccer and football and lacrosse, that it, there's also a safety issue with the, with the condition of the soil being so compacted and, and almost like playing on pavement, that there's a safety issue for the, for the children. So this is in no way a long-term fix, and shouldn't be construed as such. It's a, it's a, it's a short-term fix. I know that the council approved a, a five thousand dollar amount to go out and start the procedure of, of looking into a long-term solution, including a turf field, and, and also stadium enhancements on the, on the sidelines, and, and track enhancements also. So this is just basically a, a maintenance fix that would make the field a little safer, a little more enjoyable for, for the children using it.
Yes, Counsel Moncuris.
I just thought we already got the grant. Didn't we just get a grant at this point?
No, we applied, we're applying for a grant, the Parks Grant, in a combination of a multitude of sources that we're looking to explore, to renovate the whole entire state. But Counsel Luttery is correct, this is just getting us a band-aid between here and there.
Too expensive.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
Counsel, Mill?
Yeah, call me crazy, but, did I sit in their meeting last week when they discussed that they had a hundred and seventy-five thousand that they finished up the end of the year with?
You're not crazy.
So I'm not crazy. And, and, and I did see a thing with some swing space stuff floating around, and I did see some extra, I, I'll tell you something, if they had come to me and said, we need ten Gs, will you split it with us? I would have been a lot happier than me going to them. So I'm going to pass on this one, because I, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not comfortable. I mean, I'm sure the field needs it, but I, I think that this should be coming from the other side of the street. We don't have our meetings on North Field.
Thank you, Counsel Luttery.
A lot of those sentiments were brought up in the meeting. I did watch that same school committee meeting, and I've been very much a opponent that they should use some of that extra money to try to reduce the user fees, because I think that that's paramount to the children and the, and the parents in the community, so, and it disturbs me that it's being delayed. But there is extra money there, and that's where the concession, I guess, came, that we should split it, because it is one town, and, and we don't, I, I don't want to get back into the school versus town thing, and, and I think it's fair of us to offer fifty percent, because it is, a lot of this is for the safety of the children, you know, we could, we could argue back and forth, and it's a band-aid, and it's an expensive band-aid, but the bottom line is, you know, I wouldn't want my child playing soccer or football on concrete, and I think it's a safety issue, and I think it's something that has to be addressed.
Is that fifty percent of the cost?
Yes.
That's fifty percent of this round.
Of this round, correct.
Yeah.
Wait, through the chair, please, through the town, Counsel, Mill?
Yeah, I, I'm having trouble finding love for this. I, I feel bad, but, and I'm, and I know the work needs to be done, I just would have liked to have seen this come from the other side of the street.
Any further discussion? If not, I would just like to put in my two cents. I am a member by charter, I'm a member of the school committee, as well as a member of the town council. And what I saw, this was a cooperative effort, I think we've been, we've been trying to do the hand in hand, and I think that Miller Field at this point, although it's used only for the school, I believe that this cooperative effort shows some teamwork, and I would urge the council to pass the bill. Is there any further discussion? If not.
Yeah, just, just one more thought. I, I see it as teamwork also, but I also see it as responsibility. And I, you know, this, this has gone on, this Miller Field didn't happen overnight, it's been a long-term situation.
I agree.
And, you know, sometimes, you know, you know, I, you know, to me, they have a contract negotiation coming up, you put a strong foot forward here, you know, boys, let's, let's keep hard to the line and make sure we're in good shape, and, you know, I think that they, I, again, I've said my piece, I think I would have preferred them to come to me to ask for that, as opposed to me offering to split it with them.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question. You know, a couple of years ago, there was that big fundraiser for Miller Field, and it was the Jeep, you know, they raffled off a Jeep. But my question is, did, was, was any repairs ever done? Where did, where did that money go?
Wasn't that for the lights, or was that a separate? They did, whatever. They, they painted, they did the fence a little, at the baseball field, they did some work on the bleachers of the baseball field, they did some work on the bleachers. That was a huge, that was some, again, repair work. One thing that we, every time, I was, you know, maintenance, it's, it costs money every year to maintain stuff, and it's kind of why we're always getting these jams, we're always going for more money than we need. But that was, that money there was, was used for repairs at that time, just to maintain it and warranty it. I mean, you're looking at facilities that get a lot of use.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think we're trying to move forward, and I think. Well, I think, I mean, I think we're trying to move forward and I think that if Miller Field, you know, obviously has been neglected all the time, it's time to move forward and try to start to do something because one thing will lead to another.
Just like the other side of the fence, where the rail is going and where the DPW is running and clear the whole place back. I think that whole momentum, it's gone. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Sorry.
Eight to one. I like your style, Councilor Mill, just say what you mean. We have a motion before, the town council authorized the council president to execute the project funding agreement for the Winter Middle High School project is drafted by and between the Mass School Building Authority and the town of Winter. I'll take any actual evidence, so before we do that, I need a motion to suspend the rule. Motion by Vice President D'Avento to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilor Lutere. Any discussion of the motion? Councilor Booker. If not, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Opposed? Eight to one. The main motion, do I have a motion? Vice President D'Avento makes the motion, seconded by-
Councilor Moncuri, and I requested that we roll call vote.
We have a motion made, seconded, do we have any discussion?
Do we need to declare that as an emergency or can we just-
Yes, emergency order.
That needs to be declared an emergency order as it is essential for the fiscal year for Mass School Building Command.
Okay. So, would you put that in the minister's case as an emergency? Any further discussion, Councilor?
Well, just for clarification, this isn't changing any of the figures. This is the same thing that we've been going through over the last couple of years.
Right. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
No.
Right? Roll call, please. I knew that, I was just checking to see if you guys were on.
Councilor Callan.
Yes.
Councilor Sanford.
Yes.
Councilor Moncuri.
Yes.
Councilor Barone.
Yes.
Councilor Lutere.
Yes.
Councilor Breyhagen.
Yes.
Councilor Mill.
Yes.
Vice President D'Avento.
Yes.
President Gill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mechanical Jew, back to the Miller Field thing, could you talk to Mr. Maserow tomorrow morning because I know that they, Paul O'Donnell indicated earlier that that needed to be done? And could you also communicate that this has been done to him? Thank you. Appointment to the parks committee, I have an appointment with Julie Swanson, could I have a motion to affirm Julie Swanson to the parks committee? Motion by Councilor Lutere, seconded by Councilor Sanford. Any discussion of the motion? Not all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any others?
Could I, Mr.-
You can move to public comment, you can do it there unless it's on one of these.
No, it was actually, it was actually an addition to my, to my notes on the, there was a question, I forgot to put an answer in the DPW.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll refer back to the DPW committee report. Any objection? No, go ahead, Councilor.
The question was asked at the DPW meeting, are you required to have a parking sticker? And I have been informed that, by the police chief, that a residential parking sticker is not required in a municipal lot. So, I will add that to, can you clarify that, Chief? You look like you're-
Yes, no? Overnight parking?
Overnight parking would include municipal lots. The town, the question was on whether you need a parking permit-
Sticker.
Stickers for like the town hall lot requires a parking sticker for authorized vehicles during daytime hours or, you know, they're actually restricted to two, no more than two hours during the day. So, I think that-
You're talking about overnight parking.
Parking, parking, you would need a parking sticker, we tag regularly, the W block, the center and those areas.
All right, so we got confused on that. So, that question came up at the, at the meeting. So, if you do park in one of the lots around town, you do need a, now, according to the date, blue sticker, correct? I think yellow was on, blue is in.
August 8th, July 1st, the new stickers.
I will amend those meeting notes and send them to the-
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Public comment. Chief.
August 5th is National Night Out and it is only one month away. So, it'll be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Here is Hennecaw Square, we've gotten commitments from Massachusetts State Police, the MTA Police, Mass Fire. Fire chief has secured the smokehouse to be on display down here on Pauline Street. The meat market, as courtesy, will cook hamburgers and hot dogs and be giving memo, trying to get Richie Slush in as well. So, we've got a live band on the front wall of the town hall with the town manager signs the permit. So, it's going to be a great time. If you want to get out with the early advertising, the bands are up probably next week.
When are the hours again?
It'll be 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00, 8:00.
Are you doing the townwide drive-through again or are we just ordering the-
The fire chief doesn't like that, so we're-
Just check one at a time if you're good or bad.
Well, we'll certainly do a restrictive one, maybe plan the route a little bit better so we get less complaints.
Thank you. You don't want to refer that to rules and ordinance. Is there any further public comment? Yes?
I just want to publicly recognize all the hard work and professionalism that the chair of Rules and Ordinance brings to that committee. I really want to say that Councilor Moncuri does a bang-up job.
Any further public comment?
A pleasant, happy holiday to everyone, staff and elected folks in the town. And I'll tell you, I hope the weather holds up for you because Winter was truly an interesting place on 4th of July, so.
I just need to comment on, again, the school side. It was probably the most pleasing and professional and exciting event that has ever taken place in my short lifetime in this community. Viking pride, police, fire, putting together the, closing, the final party of the new high school. It was, it was absolutely fantastic. The energy level there, the attitude of people, the crowd control, which wasn't really necessary. The police presence was there, the fire presence was there, the ambulance presence was there. But the, the feeling within that school of the people who attended, some of whom had gone there and some of us who didn't go there, it was, it was just a, I don't know, I can't say enough. And everybody I've talked to has said the same thing. It was really, really, really nice. And it was emotional to some people, emotional happy, emotional sad. And it was, you know, the culmination of hours and hours of effort of people of getting the plans done, working with the MSBA, then getting the vote done and then having this party. And I'll go back one, two or three days before that when we had the groundbreaking and we had the speaker, we had the people from MSBA, we had the senator, town manager, Councilor Moncuri, Councilor Callan, Councilor Mill. And that was also a fantastic thing. So, it's a real exciting time in this community and those two events really put the cap on it. Mr. DP, we're proud of it. Thank you very much. I'm done. I'll take a-
Mr. Jaren.
Motion by Councilor Lutere, seconded by Vice President D'Avento. I'll say aye. Opposed? You're next.